Good afternoon. It is 5:02 and we're calling this community partner funding as well as a regular city council meeting to order. The City of Bastrop deserves the right to reconvene, recess, realign the regular session, or call it executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. Council, this is the time we're going to receive the presentations, the three-minute presentations, from our community partners who have requested funding from the City of Bastrop. And we're going to do this in the order of which they are on our list. So our first presenter will be, I'm sorry?
We have a staff member who's going to introduce and give you a rundown of how things are going to happen.
Thank you.
Ms. Alicia Perkins.
We have a staff report. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm presenting item 1A for you all. We're going to speak with our community partners. They're going to present for you all tonight. I think we're going to do between three and five minutes. I've got them all lined up to go back-to-back. If you want, I can read them off for you, or you can just go off your list. We've got 13 organizations applying this year, two new and a couple that missed a year or two, but that's the gist of everything right now. So do y'all want me to read off the list, or are y'all okay?
I think, I think we can just go right off the list as you already prepared for us.
All right, that's, and your binders are set up the same way.
And I'm going to change it a little bit. We're going to hold them until three minutes, and if they go over just a little bit, we'll, we'll allow it.
Okay.
And if we have to call them down, we'll, we'll do so in a very, very nice way.
Okay. All right.
So Mayor, just one last item. Alicia added an additional column. This is what we discussed in our pre-meeting with them regarding requested funding. Those are requests to use the convention center, and as we discussed, that may potentially be a different pot of money.
Sandy, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, we have Austin Habitat for Humanity First, so, and if you want to, the big one right here, and if you need to go back, it's this one. Okay?
Thank you. Hello, my name is JJ. I'm with Austin Habitat for Humanity, and I'm the Home Repair Program Manager. Let me, I want to thank you for having us here today. Just a little background on Austin Habitat. Habitat here in Austin was founded in 1985. We service five counties around central Texas, Bastrop being one. We focus mainly on providing safe and, and stable housing in the area. We serve low-income to moderate-income homes. Our main, you might say, what we're, Austin Habitat is known for is for home building, reconstruction homes. But we do have home repair, and we do have home housing and restore that, restore meaning the retail, the retail stores, that help us fund the programs. The Home Repair Program itself was started back in 2006, brushed with kindness, as it's called at the time, with light repairs, painting, little fancy things of that sort. From its inception to now, we're over 400 repairs in this area, being critical repairs, being replacement of roofs, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, pretty much the whole gamut of items that we can do. A lot of our repairs also modification of restrooms for accessibility, winding of hallways or restroom doorways, things of that sort. Most of our program participants that we serve, our neighbors, are older adults, over 60 years old, a lot of with disabilities, and some veterans from the area. Let's see. The income level, like I mentioned before, we average about 45% of the MFI. The Home Repair Program here in Bastrop, well, about nine years down, we're parting with, with this area. Most recently, we completed a assisted home here in Bastrop, here in the City of Bastrop, bathroom modification. You can see some of the pictures there, some of the hallway, the running, and, and the actual tub switching into a more accessible type of tub. We're asking for $15,000 for the, for this upcoming request, mostly mainly because of the increase of costs in materials, you know, building is not, repairs are not cheap, so. But also just providing more repairs to help Bastrop. We want to widen a little bit more in this area. We want to help more of our neighbors that are in this area. Before I close, you know, I was sitting right there, and, and I noticed your, your emblem there, your motto, "City of Bastrop, preservation of the past and progress for the future." And that's what we're looking at to do, the preservation of the past, trying to help the residents that are here in Austin be able to afford to stay here in, in Bastrop, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, you have any questions? Mr. Chrisa?
I have just one quick question. Only, you did one home here in Bastrop. What was the total cost for that project?
The, it was $20,000. We had to supplement with other funds, but the, we received $10,000 for the, for the project, and we supplemented with the rest of.
Do you reserve the $10,000 that you receive from the city for a specific Bastrop project, not split it across your other projects?
No, we, we try to tackle just get more bang for your buck, basically. Just try to do, we prioritize by critical repairs. And so the most, we can assist, instead of splitting it up to do, it's kind of pricey. So if, if we spread it around, we might not be able to hit those critical needs that the residents need.
So you reserve?
So we, we focus just mainly just one repair.
With the funds you get from the city?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question from?
Yes, my question is, if people want to volunteer, because I know of a lot of local people that really would love to help, how would they do that?
We do have a volunteer. It's an engagement department, our engagement department, they just have the volunteers. And we do do projects for repairs where we can leverage some of the volunteer skill, skills from folks. But it's just a matter of just getting ahold of our, or visit our website. We can Google Austin Habitat for Humanity, and there's a, for engagement, for volunteerism, and basically it'll guide you to the person.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next presenter will be from the Bastrop Cats Anonymous TNR Society.
Good evening. I'm Terry Lynn Bach. I'm the Director of Bastrop Cats. We're a nonprofit that is completely run by volunteers here in the Bastrop area. We've been helping community cats and people in the community since 2014. We've spent probably over $300,000 now on medical expenses for unowned cats, mostly in the form of spay, neuter, and vaccination, which helps with the health of the community as well. We have a serious problem in Bastrop with, you know, cats reproducing. You've probably run across them. The males fight, the females are screaming. They're having kittens in people's garages, underneath your shed, underneath your house, kittens appearing everywhere. And Bastrop County Animal Shelter was getting overrun with them. And when we started in 2014, it was to help this problem. You can't foster or adopt our way out of it. The most humane way to do it is to spay, neuter, and vaccinate these cats, and return them where they were. Let them live out their lives. And they stay in an area. They're territorial, so new cats don't always move in. When they do, maintain it, stay on top of it. These kittens that are born out, you know, in the wild, they wind up becoming prey for, for dogs and coyotes and what have you. And some of them get hit by cars, and this is upsetting to people in the community. They're always asking us for help about this. Female cats can have up to four litters in a season here. And with our mild winters, that season started earlier this year than what it has in years past. So we've been kind of overwhelmed with kittens. We work a lot with the shelter. In managing this, they refer people to us to help with the TNR program. We have several clinics in central Texas, plus two local private veterinarians who work with us. Our average cost to spay, neuter, and vaccinate a cat is $75. Just a little visual aid, how one mama cat has four kittens, and over the course of a summer, this can become lots and lots of cats. So what we've got is a, I can show you all too. And what, what we've got is a program that we want to do with the City of Bastrop, and we're calling it the CARE Program. And what is the CARE Program? The C stands for communicate. Make the community inside the City of Bastrop know that there is a short-term subsidized TNR program to get their neighborhood cats, stray cats spayed and neutered and vaccinated. Appointments. We have lots of volunteers that'll work within the community to set up a plan, get the cats trapped, and to their appointments for surgery and vaccinations. We've got traps to lend, lots of knowledge and expertise. If people have an issue where they're elderly or they're disabled, we can actually get a volunteer to help them. Return. The cats will be ear tipped so that they're marked, so that we know that they're fixed when we see them in the field again. They are returned to the site after they are trapped and post-op. And trappers will continue until all the known intact cats in an area are spayed and neutered. And then educate, you know, we can share success stories and positive community experiences to further the outreach of the TNR program. In the past five years, I think we've fixed over 5,000 community cats. That's a lot.
You've gotten to your three minutes. I'm going to let you get through with your, with your acronym, but I need some time for Council to ask questions.
Certainly. Well, I'm, I'm at the end. So once the weather turns warmer?
No, ma'am. We got, we have eleven more presenters. I have a question from Council Member Meyer.
That's fine. Thank you.
I just have mainly a statement and a question, Terry. I know how very beneficial your organization is, because I see people reaching out all the time. You're very proactive on Facebook, and usually people are, have so many problems, and y'all are the first one they go to. So I appreciate you. And I see the, the great increase that we have, and we will continue to have because of no spay, no neuter, and it's so greatly needed. Tell me, I see your number of 5,000. What do you project, what do you think, this next year? I mean, as you increase the cat spay and neuter, what percentage do you think out of the 5,000 for the next year, you're going to, how many more?
How many more cats?
Right. What, just in your past?
You're talking about in 2024?
Right. Well, just in the past years, what percentage increase have you seen over the years?
We've had, we've had increases of the number of cats from year to year. It's gone up every year. I don't remember all the numbers. I believe last, the year before last, 2021, was around 1,400 and something. And last year, it dropped down a little bit because we had a problem with giving enough clinics. This year, we are over, close to 900. I think it's, we've gone past 850 for this year so far.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Crouch.
Yes, I, I just wanted to ask on the trapping of the cats, is that something that you guys do, or are you dependent on the animal control to help you out, or a combination, homeowner, animal control, and you guys?
Animal control doesn't enter into it. We work with homeowners directly. If someone has a physical issue where they aren't able to, you know, trap and monitor the traps and get them to us, then we can sometimes have a volunteer that will help, or get someone out of the community to help.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And then it was, wasn't it $3,000?
It's $3,500, which would fix 50 community cats in the first quarter of next year.
That's the math I did, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
One last quick question. What are the funding sources, or do you guys rely on to help your organization?
We do fundraising events. We get grant money, and we get private donations. We have a huge following on, or increasing following on social media. We do a regular event every year called Kitty Bingo. That's getting pretty well-known here in Bastrop and pretty popular. That's in November.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next presenter is from the Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let's make sure I've got this. Want to thank y'all for giving us the opportunity to be before you tonight to talk about our project. Nurishing the City of Bastrop is what we do. We were established as an organization in 1987. Our mission is to serve Bastrop County residents that are going through periods of transition by providing them emergency food assistance, education, and support. In June, we were 36 years old, and in all of our 36 years, we have provided services directly in the City of Bastrop. Our programs include our Emergency Food Assistance Program, which is designed to assist anybody in a crisis need, or that is food insecure and needs to have food immediately put on their table. Our ongoing, and that also includes assistance with things like utilities, help with applications for benefits such as SNAP, Medicaid, and CHIPS. Our ongoing services include our Open Arms Program, which serves specifically the disabled populations, our veterans. Our Brown Bag Program is geared toward low-income seniors who are food insecure. Our Nibbles Backpack Program helps out children who are high-risk for being without food over the weekend at our Bastrop School District. Our supplemental services include educational workshops. Whole Grain is our distribution of fresh vegetables, protein, and grains on a weekly basis for our seniors. And then we do an open distribution of fresh food for families, which just creates opportunity and access to fresh fruits and vegetables. For the City of Bastrop, in 2022, we served 2,272 residents, 50% with emergency and ongoing food support and services. This includes our, our vulnerable seniors as well. We served 272 students with the Backpack Program. 1,278 individuals received fresh food for families from our monthly distribution, which again is open to the public. The Food Pantry is also the steward of the City of Bastrop's Good Neighbors Program, where we assist individuals within the city who are facing a disconnect of their utilities. And we do the screening for those and make the recommendation to the city on paying the last hundred dollars of their bill. For 2022, we did $3,500. Our food sources are the 45% in 2022 of our food came from Central Texas Food Bank. 32% we rescued, 14% was community donations, and 9% we purchased. I knew it. Who do we help? Seniors, families, individuals, children. We touch all gamuts of folks. This is a quick look just on what we're seeing in food insecurity, really focusing on the 2023 numbers. You can see in February that our, that our, our work was, numbers were really high in February, even higher than some of the pandemic times. We have seen about a 50% reduction in the amount of food that we're able to get from Central Texas Food Bank. So we have been experiencing a lot of bare shelves. Our purchasing of food directly from vendors is up 150%. And we need your continued support. I'm going to flop through because I want to, how can the city help us continue to support our funding requests that you have before you? Our events like Empty Bowl by allowing us to have access to the convention center? Our big thing that we have going on right now is we are in the capital campaign phase to build a new 8,000-square-foot facility. So thank you for your support, your consideration, and your time.
Thank you, Ms. Silva. Do we have any questions?
All right.
Good report, then.
I almost made it, Mr. Crouch. What happened?
Well, I know. I'm sorry. Councilmember Crouch.
I, I just had a, a quick question. I'll probably ask it of a, a couple of the people, because there's several groups that are asking for food, specifically for meals. And is there some way, do you think, that the three, or four, or five groups could work together and combine forces for that, instead of coming individually? Was there a way, do you think, that everybody could work together?
I think in some ways, we already do work together. I know that for us as an organization, a lot of times, we get an excess of produce or something. I know Feed the Need is here. We rescue HEB and Walmart. We rescue bread from them. So in the past, we've donated hamburger buns, hot dog buns to them. We've also called Feed the Need if we've got excess items. So we do currently work together in, in, in when the opportunity presents itself.
Yeah. I was just curious, because I, I see all the requests. I see the churches on the corner on specific days of the week, they go out and they're giving away food. And I was just curious if there's some master plan that we could get. And, and one of the askers today is doing it at multiple locations, and maybe you, maybe everybody could?
Something to think about is what type of food is given out. Some of the organizations are handing out hot meals, and that's awesome, and it's great, and it makes a difference. But it's not going to sustain folks who have nothing in their refrigerator. Our organization is basically kind of a grocery store model. So our families are able to sit down with the intake coordinator. They're going to get to talk about their preference and their choices. And our goal in our Emergency Food Assistance Program, which we're pretty proud of, is to give families enough food to last them 30 days, so that they don't have to make their job and their life looking for the next food to put in their hand, to just put in their mouth. So.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That helped. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
And Councilmember Crouch, a lot of these organizations do what all of us do. We follow the money. And a lot of their programs that they administer are program-specific, Meals on Wheels, Congregate Meals, and oftentimes, that's where their attention has to lie, and sometimes they're looking for matching funds for, for those areas. There, there is a way to coordinate that, but sometimes it's just a matter of the funding source.
That's a good point, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presenter is going to be the Bastrop County First Responders.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you all this evening. My name is Rick Snell. I'm the Training Officer for the Bastrop County First Responders. I'm also the Course Coordinator for the Training Program, for the Training Academy. Our program started, I guess I need to, our program started in 1988. We're a 911 response system. We provide first response EMS in conjunction with whatever ambulance service we have at the time. We've been working very closely with KDA EMS to increase our healthcare for all of our citizens. We've had this past year about 2,000 responses total from the first responders. We respond in, in any and every occasion that we can, that we have personnel and, and equipment to work with. We do medical standbys as well for the, for the city, for the county. We just did the Fourth of July program. We did standby for those as well. That's about 500 personnel hours a year that we put out. And, and again, we're all volunteer program. We're a 501(c)(3) program. The EMT Training Program kind of went by the wayside for a short period of time, but we brought it back and restarted the academy. As a matter of fact, we started, getting ready to start a class hopefully in October. We have a very successful training program in training EMTs, and a lot of those EMTs go to work for our local EMS, go to work with the first responders and the fire departments in the area. In 2018, we spent, well, we requested and got $20,347 for radios and AEDs to upgrade what we were using at that time. In 2020, we bought, we bought the mobile medical unit, which has been a real asset for the community. In 2021, 15,000 on AEDs and AED trainers. In 2022, we bought cardiac monitors. I think there were two monitors that were bought for our ALS teams that go out. And in this past year, we bought the SUV, which is going to help to increase, again, our response capabilities for personnel, and it also provides a safe way for us to transport our MMU. Okay? This year, we're requesting $11,904.81 to replace our outdated AEDs that, again, they go out, we can't get batteries, we can't get equipment, we have to replace them. And that's where we're at today. Okay?
Outstanding. We appreciate it. We always know that your requests are very specific, and we, we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Have a couple of questions. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all you do. I was wondering, what's the lifespan of the AEDs?
It, it kind of depends on, you know, manufacturers, the, the type of AEDs. The life are the ones that, that really last the longest. And they're usually three to five years, depending on, again, you know, their batteries, you know, their, their changes. The systems are always changing, especially in cardiac. Systems are always changing, the capabilities are always changing. And, and again, this is a new unit that we're looking at right now. The other ones are, again, outdated. We're having a hard time getting batteries to, to keep them running.
How, how many would this replace?
This will replace about 12, I think, 11?
Okay, thank you.
AEDs.
Councilmember Crouch.
Google said it was two to five years.
Yeah.
There was a really specific request for three new AEDs. And my question was, do you have to replace the whole unit, or can you buy batteries for the?
Well, again, the batteries get outdated. And when I say the batteries get outdated, the manufacturer doesn't manufacture the batteries anymore. The units become outdated. A lot of them, you can turn back in and get refurbished, which is an expensive process in getting them changed over and updated. And it's a lot cheaper to buy new AEDs than it is to refurbish the old ones in most cases.
Not a, not a decent replacement.
No, sir, it's not.
So I have a second question, so thank you very much.
Okay.
We appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Our next presenter is going to be the Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team. Ms. Lowe.
I have to put my glasses on. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager and Staff. Thank you for having us here this evening. As most of you all know, and I guess I'm supposed to use this, let's see. The Long-Term Recovery Team was born out of the ashes from the 2011 complex fire. Even though the fire happened in 2011, our organization was officially organized in 2012. We just had boots on the ground with citizen volunteers helping those families to start to regroup. Since then, the Long-Term Recovery Team has assisted with three wildfires, five flooding events, two winter storms, a pandemic, and now a tornado. Nine of these 12 events directly affected City of Bastrop residents. We've rebuilt or replaced nearly 155 site-built or manufactured homes and repaired over 100 homes throughout Bastrop County. During each event, we have operated a non-emergency hotline, and during COVID, we filled it 2,000 calls that were questions regarding local and state mandates, testing, and symptoms. and symptoms and questions. How we do this, our board works with community volunteers and state and regional organizations that are disaster response. And we do an unmet needs table. And so when there is a disaster, and we have families that are requesting assistance, the unmet table meets. And we go through the needs of those individuals for those projects. And each one of those organizations or agencies that are assisting with the funding will decide what they can contribute. As of lately, those dollars have started to dry up. And so we have written more grants than in my life of nonprofit work I have ever written. Thank goodness, we've been successful. Disaster is not a sexy field to be in, but it's necessary. And people have seen what the need is, and they often meet those needs. Our main priority is assisting low-income, under- or uninsured families recover from personal devastation from these disasters and public health events. Our second priority is preparedness and assisting families see the benefits of having a plan prior to something. So because I know that it is very important to this council to know where their dollars are going for the City of Bastrop residents, I went back a little bit. So I want to just go through this real quick and just tell you. In 2015 is when the Long-Term Recovery Team started receiving funding from the City of Bastrop. And this is where we've spent the dollars. So in 2015, we responded to the Memorial Day Flood, Hidden Pines Fire, and Halloween Flood. So we had a flood, a fire, and a flood. And then we, in 2016 and 2017, we had Harvey, and we had another Memorial Day Flood. In 2018, we didn't have anything happen. In 2019, we didn't. But we didn't know COVID was going to be around the corner in January and February. So we responded to COVID. And then we also had Winter Storm Yuri that we responded to. In 2022 and 2023, we were still responding to COVID. And we had another winter storm. We had the tornadoes that affected mostly in Elgin, and then Winter Storm Mara. So we have not had a break. And we've responded as best as we can. We've done repairs from as little as fixing someone's fence because of wind damage, to going in and gutting out and fixing flooring and repairing sheet rock. We've also done a mortgage assistance program, and those are the numbers there. And it's also in your packet, too, so you all can refer to that. And then also, we help our first responders, not help them, but we make sure that they're fed and that they're taken care of. And that's not a need that they have to worry about when they're out there actively assisting our residents. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Lowe?
I just have one. This made me think of, it's so hot. Do y'all do anything, I know you primarily do long-term recovery, but do you provide any assistance as the summers heat up to any elderly or anyone that reaches out? Or do you direct them? Do they call? And you direct them where they go? Or how are we kind of helping those residents?
So as Tricia stated before, our organizations pretty much work together. So we do not do, like, fan assistance, the fan drives, but we will refer people to the food pantry because they do actively help providing those fans. And then also, hands up high, they also have been doing fan drives and helping. If there are issues with utilities, like during the winter storms, we had families that lost their electricity for a period of time. We helped them with their utility bills within the City of Bastrop and the City of Elgin. And we also helped with some Bluebonnet bills, just to offset some of those costs. And then we did, we replaced some food that was lost during that time. During COVID, we worked with the emergency food pantry in, so that we could make sure that those families that were dealing with COVID in the household, we worked with them. And we did a delivery service for them. So we shopped for the food, and we delivered it to them, and also hooked them up with the food pantry.
Councilmember Crouch.
I just wanted to commend you on your application. It was just full of information, and I didn't really have any questions after I read it. So thank you for providing all of that.
You're welcome.
You can tell you've done it before.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Our next presenter is the Bastrop County Women's Shelter, Inc., better known as the Family Crisis Center. You'll notice that when the timer goes off, we hadn't automatically shut the mic off and had you all escorted out of the building, so.
Yes.
The Mayor, City Councilmembers, City Manager, Secretary and Staff, thank you for this time to come before you. This is Lauren Jones, our Administrative Services Director and our Grants Manager. In addition to our application and the information that we shared with each of you on an individual basis, I wanted to highlight today that the mission and goal of the 50-plus employees at the Family Crisis Center is to provide that wide range of services that you all saw on your application, which includes intake, counseling, court appointment, shelter, transitional housing, school-based programs, all of those services that we provide to our clients in a four-county area. And our goal on that is to help our clients to get to a point where they have a sustainable change in their lives after being impacted by sexual assault or domestic violence. We do these services through, to our far victims and their families, through awareness campaigns, through educational programs, and most of all, through the services that we provide on a day-to-day basis to keep them safe and to prepare them, help them prepare for whether they are wanting to, at that point, move and change their lives from the situations that they're in that relate to domestic violence or sexual assault awareness. And we do these through school-based programs, and we also do presentations to the public. We shared with you some numbers last week, and I think they're in your folder now, for fiscal year October 21 through September 30, 2022. And one of those numbers showed us, we went back, because I think each of you asked us those questions, we wanted to give you the numbers of service to citizens of Bastrop and what the percentages looked like. And in that year, all the services that we listed in there, the citizens of Bastrop received at least 20% of our services. So I'm going to give you a couple, and then I want Lauren to say a couple of things. But in crisis intervention, new intakes, in that year, we did 420. 115 were Bastrop citizens, 27%. Individuals receiving crisis services were 610. Bastrop citizens were 2,009. It was 34% of the services that we provided that year. Emergency shelter was 184. Forty-three of those were Bastrop citizens, and 23%. I'm not going to take all the time to read the rest of those numbers, but you guys have those in front of you. Also, we talked about what do we do with other city entities. We have a great relationship with the PD because they bring our clients to us when they're seeking safety and shelter. But our school-based program, the Prevention Ed program, works closely with recreation and the library. That's where the awareness programs and the prevention programs come in, that we provide to youth, children, and families. Those, all of those programs are free. Sure, let Lauren say something.
As the Grants Manager, this is just the part where that I tell you that although our next year's budget looks large, our organization is large, city and county funding that we receive, like, from the City of Bastrop, is so critical to our success in the whole because demonstrating that support at the local level is always a question that we're asked every time we apply for state and federal grants.
We have a question from Councilmember Meyer.
Mainly just a statement because I personally, just yesterday, ran across someone who did not know what in the world they were going to do. They were distraught. They had nowhere to go. They had no answers. And thank goodness, they were directed to y'all, and you helped them immediately. So I just wanted to say thank you. And that was just a personal experience just yesterday that happened. So thank.
Thank you. I really appreciate the tour and the education that I received last week. I thank y'all for doing that. Any other questions for Councilmember Crouch?
Thank you for the tour. That makes a huge difference. If everybody could do that, that would be awesome. It gives us a lot more information.
And I just wanted to add, I did not know that part of your state funding or grants that you receive, they look at city support. So I'm definitely glad that the city is supporting you guys and having that information. It's important, I think. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Our next presenter is the Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center. Ms. Bezner.
I didn't bring my list. I didn't, this is a good handout because it's easier to understand our copy setting. So, of course, this email. This right here is kind of going to give you the services that we provide. If you flip it over on the backside, it'll kind of summarize what we have. So let me start over. My name is Jennifer Bezner. I'm the Director of Development at the Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center. We are located at Main Street at 2007 North Main Street currently. So we are inside Faith Baptist Church. So, and you guys are all welcome at any time to come and take a tour. So I'll give you the invitation. You guys have received a flyer, kind of handout. What I try to do is be succinct in why does the Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center need funding from the City of Bastrop? And so I went to go look and see what were city services supposed to be provided? What do cities provide to its citizens? And so I broke it down into five areas. We had food. We provide, and let me, I should have said this at the beginning, everything we do is free. So we receive, we get funding from you guys. We get funding from other grants. We also get funding from churches. We get funding from individual donors and businesses. This is how we get funded. But we give out food free. And if you haven't bought a can of formula lately, it's $35. So it's not cheap. We supplement, like, WIC. When WIC runs out, we are there to help. We actually have WIC once a week in our parking lot, so we're able to kind of make sure those clients know where we are. We provide clothing. If you had a child, you know, sometimes they wear the outfit one time. So we get a lot of outfits, and we give them back out. We also do diapers, which, you know, can only be used one time. So we give those out. Safety, we give out free car seats. And one of the biggest things I think we do is we do one-on-one counseling with our clients. And so if you're meeting a pregnant mom, for example, and she's never been pregnant before, it's scary. And she has no resources. She's scared. She needs help. She needs someone to connect her. It's different than just a phone call because we meet with all of our clients one-on-one. So we're providing that service for her to help her in the next stage. We provide education, which a city also helps provide. And so we have classes in both English and Spanish. They're parenting-type classes. We actually have over 250 type classes, things like whining or tantrums, or what's your expectation for a newborn. And then we also provide some health services. And like I said on the flyer I just handed you, you saw that we have what we label in our clinic. But we provide free pregnancy tests. And we also have a state-of-the-art, brand-new sonogram machine. And we provide free sonograms also. And so the last thing I want to tell you, so that's kind of the Bastrop Pregnancy Resource Center. We have seen, last year, we saw over 700 client visits. We had a 50% in clients served. A lot of that is because we're now open five days a week. Where before, we weren't open every day. So now we're able to see clients every day. And that's all I have. Do y'all have any questions?
Outstanding. Came in under the wire.
Came under the number, and I talk really fast. But I think you guys can see the funding request and see what I'm asking for, so.
We have a question from Councilmember Lee.
Yes, ma'am.
Couple of questions. Do you guys work with the school at all in BISD?
Yes. Actually, most of our referrals come from BISD Parents as Teachers Program, or we also work with the Genesis Program and the Phoenix Program for girls that are pregnant that are attending high school at the same time. So, for example, last year, we provided car seats for all the women that were in the class, the girls that were in the class. But yeah, a lot of our referrals are from BISD and Parents as Teachers, which works within BISD.
Do you have a breakdown of city versus county?
Yes. And it was in your packet. Let me grab it. We do not see a huge amount of people that would be in the city limit. So let me see real quick. I thought I had written it down. Because we do provide services to anyone and in the county. So we see people outside of the county and inside the county. I think I want to say it's like 32, 32 or 33 individual clients. And I thought I pulled that together.
From the city?
Yes, from, that live actually in the city. So when they come in and we do intake, we have to do their address. And so they're actually living in the city. But like I said, we provide, I mean, most of our clients are within the county. So we do see a lot. And we get people from, actually, we're the only Pregnancy Resource Center east of Austin to Brenham. So we're the only one. So we see actually people from Lee County and Caldwell County. We have no residency or income restrictions. So wherever you live, we see you.
And my last question, I saw that y'all, the organization hosts some type of banquet at the convention center. Is that a fundraiser, or what is that?
It is a fundraiser. So we had our first one last year after some time off, and we had a very successful event. So it was good. We had over 325 people attend. We raised about $65,000, $70,000. So, you know, the community is wonderful. I mean, like I said, the majority of our funding comes from individuals' pocketbooks that are just giving monthly. So.
Right. Thank you.
And it's, you know, they're the hands and feet, so they're giving that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer.
Sorry. Thought it was out. Oh, I am out.
Then you are released.
Thank you, guys.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Crouch, once again.
Well, sorry.
Oh, you're good.
It's more of a statement than, great presentation. I'm glad you gave up and came up and gave all that information. The end fund for the convention center, I called the convention center today just to see what the cost was for a daily use of the convention center. And it ranges anywhere from $200 for just to get a room to almost $5,000 if you want to get the whole thing and have a fundraiser like you have.
So that, I put $2,300 in because that's what we paid last year. So that's with the 15% discount for the nonprofit. And so, yes. So we get the discount, and then that's what we paid. We rented the big space.
Yeah, I was just curious because I didn't know what the operating cost, daily operating cost for the convention center is. So that all goes into the whole kitty of the thing. And so that's great that we can offer that and that you guys can take advantage of that.
And on my breakdown for budget, you'll see it's $10,000 in operational or just funding requests, and then about $2,300. If we can get it as in kind, that would be great. So that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just a quick clarification. That $10,000 does include payments to the convention center, or does not include?
It does not.
Okay, perfect. That's what we asked you guys to do. And Mayor and Council, just for the record, we plugged in $4,000 for use of the convention center because those components can vary depending on the complexity of the event.
Understood. Thank you, ma'am. Our next presenter is the Children's Advocacy Center of Bastrop County.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you tonight. My name's Megan Webb. I'm the Executive Director of the Children's Advocacy Center. It serves Bastrop, Lee, and Fayette Counties. I want to thank those of you who are already informed about what we do at the Children's Advocacy Center. But I also want to share with you again what it is that we exist to provide, which is a coordinated, family-focused approach to the crisis of child abuse that exists in our community. Really, our purpose is to try to reduce trauma and foster healing for the families that we see that are navigating the issues surrounding child abuse and neglect. And the heart of our model is a multidisciplinary team approach. That's where that coordination comes in. We work with local law enforcement and prosecutors' offices and the Department of Family and Protective Services to provide services that those organizations need to further their investigations and prosecutions. You can keep it going. I'm good. So as you can imagine, an outcry of abuse can really throw a wrench into a whole family system. There's no manual that we come with, most of us, to even have children in the first place. And certainly, there's no manual for navigating this. So often, we're seeing families and children on what we would describe as maybe the worst day of their lives. And they come to us with a whole lot of different feelings and emotions. And a family or caretaker specifically is dealing with a lot of different things when they walk through our doors. They can be facing a loss of income, loss of the breadwinner in their home. They're often in need of specialized care, like therapy services, medical care. And one of the pieces of our puzzle is our family advocacy program. We actually have a therapeutic family advocacy program that's clinical in nature, so it's staffed by therapists. And they are there to provide every type of support that a family could need. We really want to meet people where they're at and support them through this process. What we recognize is that that begins with meeting all of the basic needs that they have and moving on from there. So we want to support financially, emotionally, strategically, and equip them to be able to support themselves in the future through the rest of their journey. So family advocates are clinicians, and they work with our clinical staff, like therapists, to be able to move the child and family into a therapeutic process. And we stick with those families and with those cases for as long as needed. Sometimes cases take up to three years to go through the prosecution process, and we're with them the whole way. Obviously, as you know, Bastrop is growing, and the need for our services are growing. Last year, the funds from the City of Bastrop helped fund a new advocate position for us. And in fiscal year 2024, we're looking forward to hiring yet another advocate. The demand is that great. Specifically, a bilingual advocate is something that we really need, a Spanish-speaking bilingual advocate. And that's really going to help us manage a growing caseload. A lot of our advocates are swamped because they try to provide the best care they can. And that's where we're looking to be able And that's where we're looking to be able to grow with your support. Thank you for your time. And I'm happy to accept questions. I did want to add, in terms of in-kind, we also utilize the convention center not just for fundraisers. A big part of our multidisciplinary team model is providing educational services and outreach to our partners. So, we host educational opportunities for our DFPS partners and for local law enforcement as well. For example, next month, we're going to be hosting a human trafficking summit where we're bringing in speakers from around the country to speak with local law enforcement and other types of investigators and prosecutors about how they can work with those types of cases. And we have opportunities like that throughout the year.
So, your request, does that include any kind of fees paid to the convention center?
It does not.
Okay.
Yeah. The $15,000 that we're requesting is for the advocate position. But we are requesting in-kind use of the convention center.
Okay. All right. I have a couple of questions. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. That, that actually was my question. I guess, because I knew, I saw that that was part of your ask. So, the $4,000, city manager, was that a specific ask from these organizations or?
No, we plugged in one event for their organization. And we estimated the events at $4,000, given our increased costs. And again, just depending on the complexity of, some may want a small meeting room, others may want a full-blown event where they're fundraising. So, it's just a number we plugged in.
And there was not one plugged in for this group? On the application, they asked for, to reinstate it.
Yes, we have received that.
But I don't see it on.
Yeah, I don't see it on the list. Alicia, can you expound on that? Is it in their application? We may have missed it. We can go back and plug it in.
I can go back and add it in there. It may have just been.
Yep.
But to be clear, it was not part of their $15,000?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you. So, I just wanted, I toured the facility and I was amazed at the information I received and the work that you guys do in the community with our EMS and our police department. The, the counselors that you have on staff, the doctors that you have on staff to help. I was, I was truly, just the, the pantry you guys have and the clothes that you have. And now, I want to crochet a bunch of blankets for children.
We would love that.
Just, just a great facility and a lot of great work being done there from the tour that I received. And I appreciate the invite for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Meyer.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on that too because I was blown away when I took a tour of your facility because I had no idea the scope that y'all serve. I mean, sadly, you know? But I just wanted to commend you also on what you're doing. And you, I'm very impressed with your facility. Keep up the good work. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next presenter is Combined Community Action, Inc. Your turn.
I'd like to say good evening and thank you very much for having me here to speak. I am Karen Walpole. I am the Communications Director with Combined Community Action, Meals on Wheels Rural Capital Area. We started off in 1966 in Bastrop County as Bastrop County Community Cares. We have expanded since then and now serve programs in over 12 counties. Or I'm sorry, over 10 counties. So, we have a request in this year for $10,000 in funding specifically for the Meals on Wheels program. This program is designed and focused on providing hot meals and frozen meals in congregate and homebound settings for seniors in the community. We are also open for people with disabilities and certain amounts of veterans. The work that we do is providing hot meals five times a week through a volunteer network that delivers the meals to the home of the individuals. So, it's not just a meal. And that's the big thing for Meals on Wheels. We're more than a meal. This is a social interaction. Sometimes, it's the only interaction that our neighbors are getting on a daily basis, a weekly basis, even a monthly basis. We've had reports where someone said that if it wasn't for us showing up, if the family members are mad at them, they'd never see anyone. So, this is really crossing lines into that. So, it's not just food that's being provided. But the food that is being provided is being provided nutritionally sound for the seniors. So, it is geared specifically towards them. In 2022, we served over 18,000 meals in Bastrop. And we have, and that's going to be to over 156 older adults. This year, we are just about 9,000 meals. And I believe, I want to say it's 186 different clients that we're serving. So, it's very robust and we try to reach out as much as we can. If people aren't able to get to us, to the locations, like what we were experiencing during COVID, then we have site managers that are calling and making sure that all of the families are okay, that the seniors are having what they need. Part of what we do is to look beyond that and to see what other needs they have and to see where we can fill. So, we are very excited to have started a program within, started in Fayette County. And we have opened it into the Bastrop site, which is called Anna Meals on Wheels. We discovered through testimony from clients that they were sharing some of the meals that they were getting with their companion animals and felt that that was something we needed to address. So, what we started to do is through volunteer-only or group, which I had, we deliver pet food and, once a month, to clients. Only Meals on Wheels clients are eligible for this program. This is an entirely grant-funded and donation-funded program. We have proudly been able to serve, I believe it is 14 clients within this, within the city of Bastrop specific, because we're also in Cedar Creek now, with pet food, with veterinary services, and with referrals for boarding. Because when an elderly member goes into a hospital, their pet still has to have a place to go. We also coordinate a fan drive in six of our counties that we serve total, Bastrop being one of them. And we try to focus on our Meals clients. Oh, man, that thing's fast. Focusing on our Meals clients specifically, hopefully alleviating some of the need that some of the other organizations are providing so that they can provide to other families that are in different situations. We're very proud to also ask for an in-kind donation of the convention center to host the Senior Expo in November. I invite all of you to attend. It was very well-attended last year. We had a great time. And the work that we're doing is really making an impact. And it's being a direct thing for each person. And it's an honor to stand here and tell you about it, along with all of these other amazing organizations that are doing so many great things for our neighbors. I am available for any questions.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I love Meals on Wheels. I, I did it when I worked in Austin at, during that period of time the company allowed us to do it. But we took our, our lunch and drove from North Austin to Seventh Street and picked up our meals and drove all over the east side. And, and you're so right that those visits were some of the only visits those people saw each day. And a lot of them were sitting and waiting for me to show up or for volunteers to show up. Some wanted you to sit and watch The Young and the Restless with them for a little while. It's like, I got a hour lunch. But I do, I think it's great work. I hope that you have enough volunteers doing it. It doesn't take a lot of time because you get a designated area and you can just hit house, 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 and you can do it on your lunch hour. So, I just think it's a great program and I'm glad that it's happening here in Bastrop.
Thank you so much. We try to make it as easy on our volunteers as possible because we could not exist without them. And I absolutely invite any of you to come to our congregate site, which is at the Settlement Apartments. Ride along with one of the volunteers. Go and see the people that we're serving. It's really impactful. We've had volunteers that have gone to homes and had, like you said, people are waiting outside and they're so excited because this is their visitor. We've also had clients that were inside incapacitated. And they could have been there for a really long time. So, it serves on many, many floors.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer.
That, you just kind of answered my question because not only is it personal interaction when they're healthy and they can, but I'm sure it's very important, almost like a well check, even though that's not the category, but that is kind of a need that you feel there too. So, that's, thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am. Quick question. Y'all, y'all are still receiving funding from, for Title III from CAPCOG, correct?
Yes, yes, we do. We need, CAPCOG is definitely one of our funding sources. Meals on Wheels is the only program that we have that is not fully funded. So, we have to raise about $2.50 to $3 per meal.
That limited Title III money to us, both congregate meals as well as the, understood. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Our next presenter is the court-appointed Special Advocate of Bastrop County, Casa. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I want to thank you all again for allowing us to come and speak today. My name is Kristi Bauer. I'm the Executive Director for Casa. This year, we celebrate our 35th year of providing advocacy for children in Fayette and Lee Counties. Our mission is that we recruit community volunteers. No, wrong way. We don't want to do long-term recovery. Okay. That we recruit community volunteers, train them to Casa Way, and then those, those volunteers go out and visit the children that we're appointed to. We become appointed to children who've been removed from their homes by the court system. So, when children are legally taken and a case is, is, is taken through the court system, that's when we become involved. Our volunteers are recruited through the communities that we serve, right? And so, we have volunteers whose mission and, and their, their role is really to ensure that these children, while they're placed out of the home, are doing well. So, some of the things that they are checking on are the safety of the children. They're checking on their mental health. If they need services, then we help recommend those that, that we believe that those children may need therapy. We also play a role in making sure that their educational needs are being met. We can fill that role in participating in parent and teacher conferences. We have the ability to attend IEP meetings and make sure that they're staying the course while they're not in, in placement with their, with their families. And one of the other things that we do is to make sure that their best interest is being displayed in the court, right? We want to make sure that these children, that the judge is aware of what's going on with their case while, while they're in the court system and make the recommendation if we believe that they should go back to their parents or not. And while that's a tough decision to make, we have to be there and we have to make those for those children. Some of the numbers that are included in your packet, if you look at that over the course of the last couple of years, we've, we've broken out the number of children that we served. To date, we, we're serving 157 children total. And our fiscal year runs from September to August. And so, these numbers, we still have a few, about a month and a half left in the fiscal year. Out of the 157 children that we're serving, 117 of those children come from the county of Bastrop. If, if you take it a step further, we always break it out to show where these children are coming from. And then, how do we target those communities to help maybe divert some of the issues that are bringing our children into care? Out of the 117 children in Bastrop County, 50 of those children are removed from the city limits of Bastrop. And so, the reason we're here is to ensure that those children and their, their needs are being met throughout. Our volunteers, I'll go really fast. We've had a total of 75 volunteers. 57 of those are from Bastrop County. 35 of those are from the city of Bastrop. And so, we're having volunteers here in the community that are serving those children. We are, again, asking for $9,000 as we did last year to help meet the needs in, in our program, make sure that we have the appropriate staff and, and needs for the children. In addition, our funding, we are diverse in that. We receive state funding. We receive federal funding. We receive all the counties that we serve. We receive funding from them as well as from the cities within those counties. And then, we have fundraising events. And I believe that we had made that a part of our, our ask as well. While it's not in the budget piece, we did make that in the narrative. And we hold our casino event typically in March. And so, that's one of the things that we have here in, in the Bastrop community. And then, we also receive individual donations and other civic organizations and assistance from churches. So, any questions that you may have?
So, your ask includes?
It does not include.
The convention center?
No, it does not include, no.
Thank you. Councilmember Crouch.
I had a question. And I think you said it. I just maybe didn't hear it properly or maybe I didn't. The number of employees?
Right now, we have a total of six, including me.
Okay.
And, and so, to be clear about that, I have three advocate supervisors. Two of those advocate supervisors are focused in Bastrop County. And one of the other ones is, are focused to help the Fayette and Lee County area.
Okay. And the reason I ask is because part of, part of the ask was for the background checks. And so, is that just for those six or is that for a bigger group of people?
So, that doesn't have anything to do with our, our employees. Our background checks, every volunteer that come in, comes to our, to serve as a volunteer has to have an extensive background check completed on them. And so, that, that goes towards assisting with that, those costs. And it averages about 40 bucks a person. And that, and then, we have to recheck every two years.
Okay. All right. That's, that's what I wanted to find out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next presenter is Feed the Need.
Thank you guys for having me. My name is Jonah Byer, the President of Feed the Need Missions. And we've been around for, I'm sorry. Bear with me. So, our mission is to feed people physically and spiritually. We do this by mobilizing believers to meet physical and spiritual needs in their communities while building disciple-making relationships. So, we are a faith-based organization. And we were established in 2010 as a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) nonprofit with a vision to replicate in other communities all over the place. And we started here in Bastrop. And so, in 2011, we responded to a couple of disasters. The Joplin Missouri tornadoes and Bastrop complex fires, providing over 40,000 meals that year, which launched our disaster relief program. And then, in 2017, we launched our Gobble Kit program, which many of you may or may not have heard about over the years or have been a part of and have donated to, where we basically provide a Thanksgiving meal with the frozen turkey and all the fixings. And then, it, so over the last 12 years now, we have established eight weekly sites where we serve every week. And we have served over 1.5 million meals through those weekly sites. Our disaster relief program has responded to 24 disasters to date. And we have served over 3,000 Gobble Kit meals to families throughout the program. We have two locate, we've had two locations in Bastrop. One of them, we've put hold on temporarily due to volunteers. And we're working on relaunching that location essentially. So, the sites, the weekly sites, what we work to do is address four areas of poverty. So the sites, the weekly sites, what we work to do is address four areas of poverty. So it's not just the weekly meal that we serve each week, it's also addressing social needs by building community. If you think of a cookout, a community cookout, we're basically, that's what we're doing. We're having a cookout. Anybody's welcome, everybody's welcome to come serve, to get a meal, and fellowship. And so addressing social needs, emotional needs by equipping our volunteers that we're recruiting from churches to journey with people through their, whatever is going on. So it might be divorce, you know, loss of a loved one, financial crisis, the list goes on. And so we journey with them through those needs, and then obviously pray with folks and our desires that people would come to know Christ. And so we journey with people spiritually through that process. From a funding perspective, for the Bastrop South site, which serves at Primera Baptist Church on Monday nights, we're looking at this next year, $60,000 roughly, which will serve about 18,000 meals. And then the new site that we're working on relaunching for this fiscal year would serve for, we're looking to launch the beginning of the year and would serve about 15,000 meals and be about $47,000. So we're looking for about $10,000 from the city to help cover those costs, and then in addition, the Bastrop Convention Center, which we use for our annual gala. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Jonah? Councilmember Crouch?
I'll ask you the same question I asked earlier about, do you see a benefit to coordinating with all the other?
Yeah, absolutely.
And are you already doing that? Like everybody else says, you're already doing that.
Yeah, so, yes, we do, and you know, as Tricia said earlier, they call us with buns and stuff of that sort. We also worked on a food, relieving hunger coalition project several years back, and the Bastrop County Long Term, or Bastrop County Cares has kind of taken over that project where we did an extensive analysis of the county and the needs in the county and understanding hunger. And the biggest issue that we found was communication, really, awareness of where the resources are. So it's, there's a lot of resource, but connecting those dots is sometimes a challenge, so...
And that's one reason I asked the question, is because we have the same problem.
Yeah.
The county school, everybody, and the communication issues can be a big thing. And so I see all the ask for that, and then if you're, there's strength in numbers, right? So if everybody can share the resources and do that, then maybe it's a better, simpler process, or maybe it's more complicated?
Yeah, I think also something to remind is like, different people come from different backgrounds and different communities, and there's pockets all over the place. And so, you know, different folks speak in different ways and just are able to meet those needs of those folks, different people connect with different people. And so we have approximately, probably 40 volunteers that serve in the city currently through our location in the city. We've got about 400, 450 volunteers that serve with us across all of our locations. So it's a lot of people coming from a lot of different places, and a lot of those people serve also in some of the other organizations, helping out. So there's, and that does bring strength. Those connection points of working together helps, but still there's nuances and difference in some of the mission that sometimes doesn't, you know, doesn't, it's not, it doesn't allow us to fulfill the mission fully, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm glad, it sounds like everybody's talking outside of this group here when you come here for one time. So thank you for doing that, I'm sure that's very helpful.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I actually was gonna say just what you said. Some people, people that are using these services feel more comfortable going to certain organizations. We have a growing homeless population who might not feel comfortable going to the food pantry, or might just want something for the moment, and that service, you guys are providing a service for them to be able to go to different locations. So a lot of it also, I think, depends on just the individual and where they feel comfortable going, and you guys do work together, I've seen it, I know about it. But I think that we do need to have the variety and make sure that all of the groups are supported, because you have, you do, just as you said, have different sets of people that have different needs that might not fit one organization, but they feel comfortable coming to a spiritually-based organization. So, yeah, I definitely see why there is a need for the multiple groups in the community.
And we cross-refer folks to the different organizations based on those needs, because not any one of us can fill the whole aspect, if you will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, council, we have 17 minutes left for the last two presenters, and time for a bio break before the regular city council meeting starts. Next presenter is in the street, hands up high ministry, Reverend Nava.
Good evening, Councilmember, City Manager, Secretary. Coming today, just to bring what we do at the open door soup kitchen, is in the streets, hands up high ministry, where we house homeless families. We don't break them up, they come together, husband and wife and children, all together. We have eight shelters there. We also have two disabled veteran shelters there as well, and we purchased a property next door, so now we have two, three transition homes over. So when they're in the shelter and they want to stay in that environment and start doing more things, they can move over, and then they start giving an offering for where they're staying at, and they still work so many hours at the soup kitchen, but then they still have time to go out and find a job so they could get up on their feet and move out. Right now, we're coming, talking about the mobile soup kitchen. We have a mobile soup kitchen now. It's a fully operated food trailer that is already passed off, the permits and everything that we needed, and it could be operated here in the city. We're gonna be doing it at Fisherman's Park, the Housing Authority, and we're also gonna pick a day out of a month that we're gonna be going to each emergency responder, giving them lunch at the fire stations, the police station, and going out and doing that as well. And we're also gonna be serving at the First Assembly of God Church, right here on Pecan. And then we're also doing our community picnic, we start that back up again in September. We'll be at Joe Hodges Park and also Delgado Park. We're gonna be doing a picnic out there, each and all of y'all are invited to go out there. And then also the brown bag lunches that we do right now, we do it with Calvary Episcopal Church, First United Methodist Church here on Main Street. We make the bag lunches, we take them out, and the churches are out there giving them out. And we're also gonna start doing that at the First Assembly of God Church as well. And then we also have our food pantry that we give out twice a week. So some people can't make it all the way into the city, but they'll make it out there to where we're at on 95. And then we also have the Safe Disaster Center as well. So when it was freezing, we had to freeze, the law enforcement here was taking in the people to us over there, Smithville was doing that as well, and Elgin was doing that. We could house 50 people. It's actually the church house, but we closed it down and returned it into the Emergency Disaster Center. And so we operate that. And then right now, we're also a cooling shelter. We open up at 8:00 and we close at 3:00. Some people stay there till 4:00, and so they stay in there throughout the whole day. As they get breakfast, they get lunch, waters, coffee, Kool-Aid, whatever, just hang out there instead of being out in the elements. And we finally got our bus up, so now we're gonna be coming into Bastrop, picking up people that we're used to at the gazebo here by the park, and we're going to the Housing Authority as well, picking them up from there. And so different areas, we're gonna pick up our bus route again and start doing that.
Cool. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Meyer?
Pastor Nava, can you tell everyone what's gonna happen this Saturday on August 29?
Yes, we're doing our fan drive. This is our eighth year of doing the fan drive, and we're doing it on Main Street, right there, Long Star Tony Collision. We'll have our food trailer out there giving out free sausage wraps and tacos and fans. And then August the 12th, we'll be down Pastor Woods Church, the First Assembly of God. We have already collected 250 backpacks with school supplies that we're gonna be giving out. We have some local vendors from here in Bastrop that are gonna be out there. We also have a Bastrop Area Cruisers Car Club that's gonna be out there, it's gonna be spectator's choice, and we have a bunch of vendors, Texas Workforce will be out there, giving a class, inviting people to a class to help them build resumes up and things of that sort, and just a whole bunch of different things going on.
Good.
Out there August the 12th. You are invited to that too, and you're also invited to the fan drive. It's the people here in Bastrop that are receiving it.
Outstanding. Fans and tacos, this is Texas.
You can't go wrong with it.
Absolutely, absolutely. There's no further questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And our last presenter is Pines and Prairies Land Trust.
Hey, y'all. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Lori Mason, Outreach Manager for Pines and Prairies Land Trust. Let me see how to work this. I tried all three buttons. Off the top of my head, we'll just have a chat. Yes, thank you for this opportunity. I work for Pines and Prairies Land Trust. We are a small, local nonprofit land trust. Our mission is to protect open space through land conservation, stewardship, and community engagement. We own and manage the Colorado River Refuge, which is a 65-acre nature preserve here in Bastrop along the Colorado River, located within the Tahitian Village neighborhood. That refuge provides three miles of walking trails, including a paved ADA accessible trail and picnic area. The reserve is a real asset to the community, it's essentially a city green space. You know, it provides a lot of benefits. People enjoy being able to experience nature in its unmanicured state. They can access the river there, they can swim and recreate, fish, kayak, things like that. The refuge also serves as the home to a lot of our programs and events. We do nature classes for children, free nature classes. We do, we had a community cleanup challenge this year. We also started a program called Books in a Blanket with the Bastrop Public Library that helps promote early childhood literacy, where kids can come out and read a story and go on a nature walk. We're always trying to expand our programs. It also hosts a lot of our volunteer events and programs. We have over 350 volunteer hours logged at the CRR at the refuge already this year, and people in Bastrop are really looking for those kinds of opportunities to volunteer and come out. Our volunteers are amazing, and we really appreciate them. All of the maintenance that you see there at the refuge is done by volunteers. And then we also are a home to other things, like we, you know, that it's, because of its location on the river, it is a birding hotspot, and Bird City Bastrop oftentimes has events there, so it can be home to other events like that. So the funding that we're asking for is $12,000 to help us with the management needs of the CRR, which includes our staff time, ongoing maintenance needs, and a much-needed parking lot improvement project. Our two bridges, Trailhead Parking Lot, was badly damaged in 2019, and since then, we've done like a temporary repair with a gravel overlay, but it really needs to be paved, and the storm water that comes off of Riverside Drive needs to be professionally managed with an engineered plan, rather than just putting a Band-Aid over it over and over again. So that would be something that we could explore, the options of in-kind donations. I'm not sure what that would look like, but perhaps the paving materials, or road crews, or the engineering services themselves, but that would be something we could explore further. Yeah, y'all have the details of the rest of our finances that you can look up. Do you have any questions for me?
Do we have any questions? I have one question.
Yeah.
How successful are y'all in writing grants and receiving grant money?
The vast majority of our funding comes from grants. It's not very much from individual donations.
So y'all do actively pursue?
Oh, yeah, all the time, yes, sir.
Outstanding. Thank you, thank you. Any further questions? Being done, thank you so much for your time. We know we rush everybody through, be aware that this council has read every, each and every one of your applications quite thoroughly, has been lots and lots of discussions. We appreciate the short presentation, and we were happy that we had enough time to be able to give y'all a little bit over three minutes, but I think it worked well. Thank y'all all for coming out, and if there's nothing else relative to community support funding, we're going to stand in recess until 6:30. Welcome back at 6:31, we are back in session. We are really pleased today to have our pledge of allegiance to both flags being given by Eli and Elizabeth Chavez. They are the children of one of our outstanding police officers, and they're grandchildren of Tracy Chavez, who sits here at the front desk and guides everybody to where they need to go. So if y'all will step forward, gang, and if everybody rise, Eli and Elizabeth are gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Who gives these two kids an outstanding round of applause? Thank y'all. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, he's gonna take pictures of y'all. Look handsome and pretty, come on.
Good job, man. And if y'all will remain standing, we're gonna ask Pastor Dale Burke, one of our police chaplains, to lead us in prayer.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for a great night here tonight. We just thank you that there will be peace and order in all this meeting tonight, but we thank you how good and pleasant it is when brethren dwell together in unity. So Father, we thank for unity here tonight as all the decisions are made. We thank for joy, the joy of the Lord is our strength. So Lord, I thank that there's joy here tonight in all the decisions made, and Lord, that you give them great wisdom in all that they're doing. We thank you that it's just, it's a blessing to be here in this community of Bastrop. So we just pray blessings upon this council here tonight, and Lord, pray blessings upon this city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Burke. Y'all may be seated. Council, one change I want to advise y'all of is that items 10D and 10F, we are moving to executive session. There have been a couple of questions that we are going to be asking our city attorney to provide clarification, and then we'll come back out to act upon accordingly. Our first item of business, if y'all allow me to get organized here, is the mayor's report, real short. I'll say it's real short if I find it. Maybe even shorter. Thank you. Just real quickly, on July 14th, 15th, the Corvette Invasion came to town with some 250 Corvettes. On Friday night, our state rep, Stan Gertis, presented a Texas flag to Mr. Ben Keating. Mr. Keating had just won the Le Mans, 24-Hire Le Mans on June the 11th, and a flag was presented to him that had flown over our state capitol on that very day. It was quite an event, it's a great event for our city. Thanks to Visit Bastrop, the Bastrop Area Cruisers, and our own convention center staff for their efforts. Mayor Protem Kirkland may have more to add to this, as he is a Corvette owner. I want to advise everyone that Campos is currently conducting a study on Chestnut Loop 150. As we know, this road transition between commercial areas downtown and near our Bastrop State Park, as we grow, there's gonna be a continued need for improvements that considers vehicles, pedestrians, bikes, and other transportation modes while supporting Chestnut Street as a major thoroughfare through our city. I, as well as Councilmember Meyer, went on a walking tour with Campos Consulting, some Campos staff, and we had a great discussion with that, we did that last week, last Wednesday, I believe. And then there was, or it was past Tuesday, there was an open house here at City Hall relative to that, I'm sorry, at the Art Center on the 19th. Also on Tuesday, I was given a tour of the Family Crisis Center by Kathy Hinson and Reverend Bernie Jackson. What a great experience that was. On Thursday and Friday, Councilmember Meyer and myself went to Round Rock for the Texas Municipal League's newly-elected officials orientation. TML sessions are always very informative, it's a great opportunity to learn and network. Prior to that, though, in celebration of the Parks and Recreation Professionals Day, I got to attend a tree planting done by our Public Works Department, thanks to Mr. Curtis Hancock and his staff, as well as to our city arborist, Thomas Martinez. This tree is directly behind us, and it is going to provide some shade. I thought it was gonna be a smaller tree, and I had some remarks prepared to say, you know, the meaning of life is to plant a tree for which you will never have benefited the shade. Well, dead gummit, they're so good, we already got shade, so. I want to remind every one of our boards and commission fair schedule for tomorrow night at 4:00 PM right here at City Hall. If you're interested in being one of our advisory groups, I urge you to attend and learn how you can contribute to our community. Also tomorrow night at 6:30, we'll have a community forum to discuss our streets. I'm hoping that our city manager has a few more details and wants to speak on that a little bit more, but it's vitally important that we approach our streets in a comprehensive manner. That being said, who do I want to put on the spot? Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing that I attended a couple weeks ago was at the Art Center. I can talk pretty loudly, so I remember that. Oh, we're both off, all right. Y'all can hear me, right? So out there, you probably can too.
Okay, now it's working.
All right. Hey, there we go. So a couple weeks ago was at the... So a couple of weeks ago was at the Lost Pine Art Center, where the Peterson Brothers played, our hometown heroes in music, and it was fantastic. So really thoroughly enjoyed that, seeing all the people and their families. I also wanted to make the bicycle tour with the different city parks, but I didn't finish my Fisherman's Park excursion that morning. But I did come up, and I was able to see them going down Main Street. So that was a great participation, and I'm so happy they had a good turnout for that. Also, as the mayor mentioned, took the walking tour of the Chestnut Street corridor, and it was, it was really nice because it was 10:30 to 12:00, and it was nice and cool outside, so. But we found the shade. So I can tell you all where the shade spots are on Chestnut Street. We found all of them that day. And then the next day, I took a tour also of the Family Crisis Center and was very impressed with the work they do there and the extensive work that they do in the community. Went to sit with Sylvia, our city manager, at Casa Chapala, which was great, and we had a really, really good turnout. So I encourage everyone, when Sylvia has these, for you to please come, and Sylvia's open to any questions. She has answers for every question that you can ask. So please take advantage of that and attend those. We also did the Campo Open House of the 150 corridor, and it was great to see interaction with the community that, that came, and they were drawing on the maps and having input. So that was really important, that we hear what people in the city want and they don't want. That's important, too, is to know what they don't want. And then the mayor and I went to Round Rock for two days and attended the Texas Municipal League orientation for new city officials, and that was very, very informative, and it was really nice to share some space, too, with our neighboring cities of Smithville and Elgin. So we all got together and had a great learning and bonding experience. And the last thing, we had a joint meeting last night with Economic Vile Corporation. So that wraps up my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Protem Kirkland.
Thank you, Mayor. So first of all, I would like to thank the Opera House. They had their annual unveiling of the plays that they're going to do over the next year, and mainly, I just want to thank them for making Bastrop look so good. Next is, I'd like to invite everyone to the 76th Annual Bastrop Homecoming and Rodeo, August 1st through August 5th. And you can look at all of the events that are planned for that at bastrophomecomerodeo.org. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council member Plunkett.
Yeah, just wanted to reiterate that how important the Chestnut Street Corridor study is, and please participate in that. It's really important to how we are going to move forward with development, and it goes to the state, who owns that road, some good input. And, yeah, I went, went to a lot of stuff, too, but I won't bore you all with that, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council member Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bastrop. Did quite a bit, as always. Again, I always say, I didn't do nothing, and then I go back and look at my calendar. Yeah, there's a dot on every day. I did a TML webinar on secession planning for cities when we have a new mayor, council member, or CFO leave, and how cities survive and replenish by using their own staff, our training staff, which our city manager is doing a great job of, training staff on how to be cross-functional, so when those occurrences happen, we are able to replace them with qualified people from our community. So it was a very good TML webinar. I attended the, my P&amp;Z meeting, and I actually went to the Historic Landmark Commission meeting this week. I, too, met with, well, I met with the Family Crisis Center, but I also met with the Food Pantry to take a look at the plans that they have for their new facility. I stopped by the Campo corridor study, so looking forward to more engagement and discussion regarding what Chestnut's going to look like in the future. I volunteered at the Opera House for one of their last showings for A Trip to Bountiful, and I, too, attended the reveal for next season. Like Mayor Protem Kirkland, the Opera House is just killing it. Still Magnolia's is about to start. I already got tickets for that. Those will go fast. I am reviving my acting career again for the third time this year in Willy Wonka. So been watching that play every day to get ready for that, so just continue. Lots of good things still happening at the Opera House. I attended the Corvette Invasion. Those people are serious about their Corvettes. A lot of nice Corvettes. I swear Batman was somewhere because there was one that was off the chain. Batman had to be driving it. I just didn't find him. But it was, it was nice to see everyone enjoying their Corvettes and their cars, in spite of the heat. The Street Maintenance Town Hall is tomorrow. I want to make sure that everyone is aware to come out to that. Lots of good information will be provided. Great opportunity for you guys to ask questions. I've lived here my entire life, and I think the streets have always looked the way they've looked. So I'm glad that we are now focusing on changing that for our city, and we need your input. The Bastrop Library, they're ending their summer reading program, so I stopped by there for the last day. They gave away prizes. There was lots of paint. There were paintballs being thrown at adults, so the kids had a blast. And it was nice to see the programming that the, the library put on for that. Lots of pizza games, grand prize winners for reading, for, for kids who read, who read 500 or more minutes over the summer. I wanted to give a shout out to our public, our Parks and Public Works Department. So I sat down one day. We get, we get a weekly memo from the EDC and from our city manager, and so one day I was just like, I'm going to spend the whole day reading all these weekly memos back to April. And everyone had something that the Parks and Public Works Department was doing with photos. And in this heat, you, you have to remember these guys, think about what they're doing for our community and the, and the hard work that they do with the staff that they have. So I just wanted to take some time out and thank you guys for everything that you're doing for the community, and please stay hydrated. I wanted to, I got a little card, special council member that I am, from Bonnie Coffee, one of our residents, who sent me a little card to thank me for my service here up on the dais. It's a, I mean, we meet once, twice a month, but we do a lot in between. It's a lot of work, a lot of conversations in between that we do, so I appreciate the thank you from the residents. And then the last thing I wanted to do is just remind everybody to stay hydrated. I am not a summer girl. I'm an indoor kind of girl, and I went out to do some yard work one day because I thought Jesus was hot in the sun for a little while, and it didn't stay hid for long, and literally almost fainted. So please stay hydrated. I read that for every 15 to 20 minutes you're outside, you should have eight to 12 ounces of water. So you may be out working out, or just walking, or doing yard work, and once I get engaged in it, I don't stop until the phone rings or I almost pass out. So just remember that if you're out, you may feel like you're comfortable, but your body may be feeling something different and recognize when you are getting heat exhaustion or, or near stroke, and then look out for others, because my son gets disoriented in heat if he's dehydrated, and will literally walk off, and you won't know why, and that's typically why. So just, you don't know what your body is doing. So just look out for others that you might see in distress while they're out enjoying this heat in the summer. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Council member Crouch.
I did most of the things that you guys did. I didn't get to go to Round Rock for the new council members orientation, but the, all the other items, the Corvette Invasion, the Campo 150 corridor thing, the bike tour around the parks was really nice, and we had a lot more people than we expected, I think. I don't think we thought as many people were going to show up, but there was a lot of people, and that was kind of fun to get a police escort around, around town. I wish they would do that every time I went out on my bike. It'd be cool. The Sit with Sil is, is great. If nobody's been to that, or if you haven't been to that before, you should really try to participate in that. The development, things that we have going on right now, if, I know not everybody's up to speed on that because you don't live it and breathe it like we do, but the city manager's been doing a great job in taking the staff out, out to sites, and actually seeing what they're processing every day. So it's good, I think, to put the, the process that's out in the field with what you're doing in the office, so that you can kind of recognize what you're doing, and, and I think that's a great thing that she's doing with that. The rodeo arena, I wanted to mention the rodeo arena. It, it didn't show up in the version of the Parks Master Plan that was put out recently, and so there was a lot of phone calls that I received. I'm sure everybody else got phone calls about that as well, but I, I want to recognize the rodeo arena, that it's been around for over 75 years, that it was built, knocked down, rebuilt, and put up on the hill again. So that, that venue has a lot of history with the city of Bastrop, and all volunteers built it. So I think it's important that we keep it in, in our Parks Master Plan, and obviously from the amount of response that at least I've received from citizens calling in, they, they think we should do that, too. So I hope we get that amended to at least show the rodeo arena or include some, the rodeo arenas somehow into our Parks Master Plan. And then that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, the Parks Master Plan, I mean, that was, that was derived from citizen comments, but that's why we get the big bucks. We get to, to include what needs to be included in there. So I wholeheartedly agree that the rodeo arena has to be a, an item for us to look at and look at strongly in a very positive way.
Yes, and it was totally a conceptual, I mean, the whole thing was a conceptual plan, so it's just an idea, but what, what the concern was is that it wasn't shown, and there's also a concern that, that it'll follow in the footsteps of the State Park Golf Course. So once it's gone, you're not going to get it back. It's going to, or it's going to be very hard to get it back, and so everybody kind of has that in their mind from when the State Park Golf Course went away, and then nobody can do anything, or it's very hard to do anything about it now. So just wanted to keep it in everybody's minds, and I think that's great that the citizens are calling and commenting on it. So good, good job.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Before we go, go to the city manager. Mr. Barhorkes, you have your light on. Did you have something you wanted to say, or you just want me to call attention to you?
I was unaware. It's on the side right over here.
Thank you, sir. You bet. It's time for the city manager's report. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to keep it super brief. Boards and Commissions Fair this Wednesday from 4:00 to 6:00 in council chambers. If you have not picked up an application to join any one of the number of boards and commissions, please do so. Always looking for new applications, fresh ideas, new faces. Let's talk about streets. There's a song, a little cue that I want to go to, but I know it's a topic that's not fun. Immediately following the Boards and Commissions Fair, and we will talk about what our last five years have been with streets and some potential opportunities moving forward, but it was about 75% of the comments in Budget Balancing Act were related to streets. So can't ignore it. There was a big public calling, so here we are. We're going to talk about streets and how we move forward and dig ourselves out of that big bill. And then we did enter stage one drought restrictions. So the drought restrictions right now are voluntary, and what I learned just a short time ago is when you go into voluntary restrictions, usage actually goes up. So we're going to fast approaching stage two mandatory. And I will tell you that recently Aqua Water issued a moratorium on feasibility studies, meaning large developments will not be able to occur in Aqua's territory without some change or some agreement with us on how we can get water. Council's aware our new wells won't come online until next December, so we are frantically pushing forward. You know that the groundwater district moratorium is still in place. That does not apply to single family, but it also applies to larger subdivisions. Water Control District Number Two also had an issue with the well that had gone down and issues with the other. Both of those are back up, and they are also frantically moving towards some improvements to get water flowing, but it is, it is our new reality. If you saw any of the news this week about the San Antonio-Austin mega metroplex, the nomenclature that they're giving us in this area, water is one of the many, many, many things that we will be addressing as a region and as a state. Texas Water Development Board has had it on their number-one list of priorities to continue to affect, and we're going to continue. So stage one voluntary, we are going to fast move to stage two. It is the new gold. And I did everything y'all did, minus the bike ride. So thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to our work sessions, 7A, receive a presentation of the proposed 2024 budget and announce a public hearing on the FY 2024 budget will be held on September 12, 2023 at 6:30 PM at City Hall located here at 1311 Chestnut Street.
Mayor, before Ms. Waldron gets started, I do want to inform you all, she has accepted an offer in a neighboring jurisdiction, and this will be the last budget presentation she gives to you after 11 years. So we wish Ms. Waldron well. We are so sad. I know she will be back. I know she will be back. I am hopeful she will come to her senses before she leaves.
With that, Ms. Waldron, the floor is yours.
Yes, yes. So we're excited to present the fiscal 2024 budget. The presentation is the highlight in the budget that you have been presented with this evening, and so we'll get started. So the all-fund summary, this is a comparison between the fiscal '23 and the fiscal '24 budget. Fiscal '24 total revenue, $74 million. Total expenditures, $121 million. Yes, we are in excess expense over revenue by $47 million. That is capital projects. That is bond money being spent down, and so we expect that. This year, we did a, a new citizen engagement platform called the Balancing Act. I know that all of y'all got to go on and look at that. We did have good participation on that this year. These are the average increase-decreases that came from the submitted simulations. So there was some increase in ad valorem revenue and in expenditures. There was a consensus for the two new officers in the police department, a reconstruct, restructuring, and addition of a lieutenant in the fire department, cost of living increase, little bit of a cost of living increase, and a slight decrease in community organization. This is a comparison of the general fund, the original 2023 budget, what we project, the '23 budget to end, and the fiscal '24. Fiscal '24 total revenue is $16.8 million. Total expenditure is $16.6. I have a correction about 3:30 this afternoon. I found an error, so I want to make sure that when you're working through the proposed budget, you know that the 155 is not available anymore. It's more like $83,000 is available. So we'll make those corrections in the final budget. This budget includes one-time expenditures and transfers out of $933,000. Ending fund balance is $5.5 million, which is 33% reserves. Our policy is a 25% reserve, so I am communicating to you that there's $1.3 million above the 25% reserve available. These are the property tax in red. This is preliminary. I have not applied the certified rule that we received yesterday. We haven't received all of the other items that have to go along with those tax rates. I should have those calculated by tomorrow. But the assessed value went from $1.4 billion to $1.5, almost $1.56 billion. But the assessed value went from 1.4 billion to 1.5, almost 1.56 billion, 10.9% increase in value year over year. Some of the factors that affect that assessed value year over year, exemptions, settled, settled values of under-reviewed properties, settled lawsuits. This valuation includes seven, 70.8 million of new valuation. That's 46% of the increase. So that kind of shows you that there's still quite a bit of increase on current existing properties. The 2023 assessed value, when we do the calculation, the under-review will be calculated at approximately 75%. I usually use the low value that's actually given to us by the Bastrop Central Appraisal Just to go over the definitions, no new revenue is the tax rate that would generate the same amount of revenue than last year based on the value of the same properties for both years. The voter approval tax rate is the rate, it's the maximum rate that we can go to without a voter approval. The proposed MNO tax rate that is being proposed in this budget will generate 123,000 more revenue than the no new revenue rate. So the rates that have been calculated based on the preliminary valuations, no new revenue tax rate, 48, proposed tax rates, 5056, voter approval is 5084, no new revenue MNO tax rate is 3017 and proposed MNO rate is 3094. The debt service is still at 1962, same as last year. This is just a, a history of the distribution of the tax rate over the years. This is all in the book and it shows how that tax rate has come down the last couple of years. This is a comparison to the, the assessed valuation and how that's continued to go up each year, especially the last two years and where that tax rate has been landing. So the property tax calculation is generating 8.6 million in revenue. The distribution for that is 5.2 in the general fund and 3.3 million in the debt service fund. The assessed, the average homestead value changes year over year, but if you apply the average homestead value to the tax, last year it generated 1,312 and this year with the new valuation and the proposed tax rate, it would generate 1,456, which is $146 more year over year. Sales tax, sales tax has been strong. We budgeted 7.75 million. We're projecting 8.3 by the end of the, of the fiscal year '23, which is a 7.5% increase. The fiscal '24 proposed budget is 8.75 million, which is 5% increase or 416,000 over the projected '23 amount. The budgeted priorities that were communicated and confirmed by council at an April 19th and a May 12th pre-budget workshop, these were street maintenance rehabilitation, Old Iron Bridge, several additional staff for general fund, enhanced personnel benefits, the policy for credit card fees, drainage master plan, transportation master plan and impact fee, one-time requests using available fund balance, sorry, and capital improvement So in the general fund, significant changes that you will see, there is no longer a hot transfer to cover several positions that were put in the general fund. Those positions have actually been moved back to the hot fund. We removed the development services revenue and expenditures out of the general fund. We've created a special revenue fund, so you will see that as a separate fund in the budget book. We have reduced the transfer from Bastrop Power and Light by 50,000, moved street maintenance expense of 800,000 above the line into the operational budget. It was considered one-time in 2023. This was possible because we completed our agreement with Burleson Crossing for the 380 and we no longer had to rebate those sales tax. There was also an increase in the lease payments to the VERF Fund, the Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Fund. Personnel costs, the general fund budget includes eight new full-time equivalent positions, executive administrative assistant for fire, system administrator for IT, police officer two for lieutenant fire, crime victim advocate and two maintenance workers for public works. Some additional benefits, cost of living increase of 3%, step increase of 2.5%. We've increased the retirement employer contribution by 8%. This actually raises that contribution rate to the amount that will be, allow the, the city to change to a 7% plan effective January 1st with approval. The city received a rate pass for health premium rates. That's, that's very good news. The reoccurring operating expenditures increased by 2 million over the prior year. These are the, the, the big chunks of that. New positions and reclassification, 511,000. Community event support, 10,000. Cost of living and the step increase, 484,000. Retirement increase, 76,000. Street maintenance, the 800,000 and the vehicle equipment, lease payments to the VERF, 131,000. The proposed budget includes 933,000 in transfer out, one-time request. This amount is coming from excess fund balance. It's over the 25% reserve requirement. Police requested a K-9 unit and replacement of tasers. IT, security camera upgrades, servers for PD, video storage, that was a replacement. Public Works, five trucks, a water truck and some mowing equipment. Engineering requested a truck. Fire, there's a mini pumper, which is a replacement, brush truck refurbished and a generator and a small transfer to the cemetery fund. This is just looking at the Development Services Fund in comparison for fiscal 2024, total revenue of 2.4 million, total expenditures 1.7 million, which is generating in excess of 776,000. Ending fund balance, 1.9 million. The Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Fund was established in 2016 to ensure that the city can cash fund replacement of vehicles and equipment at the end of the useful life. General fund is transferring in 815,000 and the water wastewater fund is transferring 50,000. Total expenditures increased in this fund by 96% over fiscal '23. We are continuing to try to turn over and replace all of our fleet. So this is getting the city closer and closer to having all of their vehicles and equipment in this fund. Street maintenance rehab, we've talked about the 800,000 out of general fund. We also have 5.56 million in current bond funds that are earmarked for street rehabilitation. We've talked about a issuance of a CO in 2024 for general fund debt service. We're looking at 15 million at the current INS rate. We're not looking to increase that rate. This is the capacity we have available. Priorities would be Old Iron Bridge. Of course, we have a grant pending, so we'll wait and see what we hear in October. Secondary Gil's Branch and street rehab is on there depending on how both of the grants turn out. The certificate of obligation for water wastewater debt service is estimated at 36 million and this will cover the continuation of the construction of the water plants. Wastewater Treatment Plant Number Three, Phase Two construction, transfer lift station in Force Main and a 1 million gallon elevated storage tank east of 969 construction. The master fee schedule was reviewed. There are no recommendations this year for any general fees. Water wastewater is, has some water increases, $5 to the base and also incremental base fee increases, 1.5 inch meters and up. This is, I think, the last year of the five-year plan to align with the American Waterworks standards. Building fees increases in various permits, inspections and fees, addition of plan review. All of these are in the back of your budget on the master fee schedule and they're redlined for what we've changed. This is a sample of the current fees on an average single resident. Right now, the fees would be 3,522 with the proposed fees. There is a plan review fee being added and the trade permits are being increased. It would go up to 4,176, which is a $654 increase. Some considerations, the proposed rate doesn't have to be the final adopted rate, but we do want to step out with a proposed rate. That way we can work from there. We can never adopt over the proposed rate, but we can adopt under the proposed rate. The adoption of the voter approval rate would provide an additional 43,000 to the general fund. Sales tax is being proposed at a conservative 5% increase. There are some fee changes being proposed and general fund available fund balance over the 25% reserve is 1.3 million. Important dates, so July 25th is today and we have received some of the pieces to go ahead and start the rate calculations. August 8th, we will be bringing back a resolution for an adoption of a proposed tax rate and August 15th and 16th have been set aside for budget workshops. And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Waldron? Been really thorough. Is this PowerPoint synopsis going to be provided to council by email?
I can send it and they can put, everything that's in the PowerPoint though is in the book. I just took pieces out. Yeah.
Outstanding. And I really appreciate it. I'm going to miss your conservative projections.
Thank you.
Because it always makes us feel good toward the end of the year. So thank you very much. Mr. Kirkland?
On the expansion of the hotel occupancy taxes based on the passage of this, of the state law this last session, how does that impact the budget or when does that, when do we get, start to receive those funds? How does that work?
I think we have to have a project first. This proposed budget doesn't really have anything in there. So once that comes down, there would be a budget amendment to appropriate whatever decision is made on the project or the hotel or, and I think an RFP needs to be done and so it is not included in this proposed budget.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm still here, unless you're.
We will now receive a presentation on the unaudited financial, monthly financial report, investment report for the period ending June 30th, 2023.
This presentation is much shorter. General exceeding forecast by 10%. Sales tax is exceeding three and a half over forecast, though I have seen the July numbers and they were actually pretty strong. Development fees is 74% over forecast. Impact fee fund running 16% short of forecast, but all other funds are performing positive to forecast and all expenditures are positive to budget. We always come to you with the quarterly investment report. Right now, book value, we have 90 million, 900,000. We are starting to see the rate of return as some of our lower rate of return CDs are starting to drop off. We're starting to see that rate of return start climbing and I believe that is it. The detail is actually in your packet, but that's a summary.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you for your work here at the city. One of my highest levels of anxiety coming into council was numbers. I was never very good at math. My mom made me bring my math book home every day. Not that it helped, but I was forced to. And so coming in, I was just, just had severe anxiety. I met with you early on outside of our initial meet with the cohort that I signed on with here for council and just made everything make sense. Your presentations have always just been very thorough and on, on point, always looking ahead for the city and I just didn't want you to leave without giving you some appreciation and, and wish you well in your next.
I looked at my last meeting. I think I have seven items, so I'm going out with a bang.
We look forward to it and thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We will now move to the citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have any citizens who wish to comment?
No, Mayor.
That's an easy one. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Does anybody on council on the dice wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is anybody in the audience wish to remove something from the consent agenda? Seeing no indication, Madam Secretary, if you will read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Consider action, item 9A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the July 11th, 2023 regular meeting. Item 9B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-21 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a natural gas franchise agreement to Universal Natural Gas LLC, doing business as Universal Natural Gas, Inc., and the success, and its successors and assigns for a period of 10 years from the effective date of this ordinance, a non-exclusive franchise and right to enter the public ways of the city of Bastrop, Texas, for the transportation, distribution and/or sale of gas to customers and the public generally in the city, defining the words and phrases therein, providing assignment, sale or lease or lease of the franchise, providing for use and repair of the public ways, providing for regulation of service establishing depth of pipelines, providing for indemnification of the city of Bastrop, providing for inspection of grantees' records, requiring grantee to pay a franchise fee, providing for conditions of the franchise, providing for construction of this ordinance upon invalidity of any part thereof, providing for acceptance of this franchise by grantee and both an effective and operative date thereof, repealing all other ordinances directly in conflict herewith, providing for severability and providing for publication. Item 9C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2023-22 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Article 3.1, place type zoning districts and adding Article 3.4, planned development districts, establishing standards and procedures and providing for findings of fact, repealing severability, codification, effective date, proper notice and meeting. Item 9D, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-106 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the certification of additional sales and use tax to pay debt services, providing for a repealing clause and providing for an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The consent agenda has been laid out. Do I have a motion?
After a brief.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Please forgive me. I got ahead of myself. Madam Secretary, if you will read, read the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
I apologize, council, getting ahead of myself. We will now move to items for individual consideration. Item 10A, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-104, the city council of the city of Bastrop, a warranted contract to, for the city of Bastrop Police and Court Building Roof to Horizon Roofing Specialist in amount of 121,657 dollars and zero cents as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for repealing clause and establishing effective date. Mr. Hancock?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as y'all know, y'all have probably read in the staff report, the roof over there is a metal roof. It's a standard seam roof, meaning it's flat, rises, goes back down flat and comes back up. Well, where it attaches, over time, you know, it just wallows out and it just causes leak after leak after leak. This roof is what, 23 years old and what we're looking at doing is putting in our, it's a product called Duralast. It's a membrane roof where it actually will go in and over the top of the metal roof in between the in between the seams, they'll come in and put foam pieces, and then they'll lay decking over the top of that, and then this PVC membrane will cover all of that. So, it will stop what the problems we're having now. We're going over there, we'll have a leak, we'll repair one, next round, guess what? There's somewhere else, and we're just chasing it. And it's just problem after problem. I did bring a piece of this. I'm gonna pass it, let y'all feel of it, so y'all can see it does. We cut a slit in it with a knife, and I dare y'all to try to rip it apart. But that being a flat roof, the metal was probably not the best thing to be, because metal roof really needs to be a pitch so it gets the water on off of it, so it don't sit there and have a chance to cause problems. Do y'all have any questions?
Councilmember Crouch?
I had a question. Did you say you were gonna put, that they were gonna put the membrane over the top of the existing metal roof? Are they gonna peel that off and then start all over again?
Yeah, they'll seal it off, and then it comes in with an insulation piece that are cut in between the grooves of the metal, and then another board sit over the top of that, then the membrane.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
So, I don't, I don't know if you heard him right. This, the roof is staying.
Correct.
They're putting it over. I don't think that's what. Okay.
That, that was my question. So, this, the membrane's gonna go over the top of the existing roof?
Yes.
Correct.
You're not taking that off?
No, we're not taking it off.
Okay. That explains the cost, why it's less expensive than I would've thought it would've been.
Right, right. It's really common procedure now with flat roofs to do them that way, because what are you gonna do? Take it off, and then what are we gonna spend? This here, this product does have a 15-year warranty.
Yeah, the membrane roof is the ideal way for that flat situation, better more than the metal.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I didn't see a start date. Or did I miss it? When was, when is the project, when is that work starting?
Waiting on y'all's approval, and then we'll schedule with the contractor.
Okay. No timeframe?
No timeframe. We can give y'all update. We'll make sure to put it in a weekly, or the city manager can pass it along, but waiting on y'all to see how, if y'all approve it, then we'll get a schedule when they can come out.
Okay, thank you.
Always waiting on us.
Well, I can't approve it, so.
Councilmember, Mayor Protim Kirkland?
I can confirm that it cannot be torn in half.
Thank you for that experiment. Councilmember Plunkett?
I'll move to a brief.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no indication of such, Madam Secretary, if you will read the roll.
Mayor, I apologize for clarification. Who made the second?
Mayor Protim Kirkland.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Moving on to item 10B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-105 of the city council of the city of Bastrop to approve a professional services contract with Luck Design Team LLC for the city of Bastrop Fairview Cemetery Improvements, Section 9 Development, for a not-too-exceed amount of $112,299, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr.?
Yeah, I'm also just not our artist.
There you are.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Since this is Artis' first presentation with the city, I would like to introduce him. Artis is a new project manager with the engineering department. He has graduated from Temple University School of Architecture with a degree in architecture. He has approximately 17 years with experience in his field, and mostly in the city of Philadelphia. He has managed various projects, and some of the notable projects that he has managed include the 114 South 13th Street, which was awarded the General Contractor Association Excellence, Excellence Award, and the Silk Factory Lofts, which was awarded the Edwin G. Hall Historic Achievement Award. He's been with the city approximately two months, and we are very happy to have him. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi. Nice to meet you. A little tall there. Okay.
I had the same problem.
Well, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. So, just bear with me. I'm gonna see if I can, okay. I'm presenting to the council the, to authorize the approval for the professional services contract for the Fairview Cemetery Improvement, Section 9 Development with Luck Design. The, to give some background, the Fairview Cemetery Advisory Board has been working on the plan to develop the Section 9 located on 2.5 acres on the southeast corner of the Fairview Cemetery to expand plot availability for sale. Plot inventory is getting low in the open sections. In addition, an increase in cremations has helped to identify a need for the columbarium option for the interment of ashes. Additionally, Section 9 is developed, is undeveloped land, which is already owned by the Fairview Cemetery, and is estimated to add approximately 1,100 plots niches for sale. The city has previously worked with Luck Design on the planning of an unimproved area of Section 9. And to kind of give you some of the information on the scope of work, Luck Design will provide construction documentation and administration to include approximately 1,100 plot niches, a loop drive with striping signage, a three columbarium, and a shade structure in the center, and landscaping. The site is located in the red, on the southeast bottom corner, and this is a conceptual rendering, and this would be located on the north area. And the project funding is, is for the authorization for professional services, and it's for $112,299, and the funding source is the cemetery fund fiscal year 2023. And for the project schedule, once we get the notice to proceed in August, then we will have a seven-month schedule for design. And for our recommendation, the authorization, to authorize the approval of professional services contract for the Fairview Cemetery Improvement, Section 9 Development with Luck Design LLC, in the amount of $112,299, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes, I can report from the cemetery board that they're very anxious to get this project going. We're very short on spaces at this point, and the, the inventory, so to speak, is very much needed.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Crouch?
You're on the spot now.
Yeah. Sorry. I, I was marking it up. I just had one question on the contract. Sorry, should've bookmarked it. On the item E, on page 151, item E delays, it says contractor shall have no damages for delays or hindrance, and the event of a delay or hindrance not the fault of the contractor, and extension of time shall be the contractor's sole remedy. So, is that typical in our contract, Alan?
So, I, item? E? Was it E?
I'm sorry. It's on, on our, in our packet, it's page 151. And it's item E, yes, item E delays.
Delays. Oh, there we go. Yes.
Section 2 is what, what it's in.
Yeah, I'm looking in here. This is the city standards contract that we have worked with our legal.
It's under determination provisions, item E delays. It just, it just seems like that's not right.
Well, it seems to me if the delay is of no fault to the contractor, that we wouldn't penalize them for it. I think that's what you read. Isn't that correct?
That's how I read it.
Yeah, it says that the, the sole remedy, it would be contract time extension, not contract price.
Well, I'm concerned with the first sentence, contractor shall have no damages for delay or hindrance, so.
If it's not their fault.
That are not, that are not the fault of the contractor. Correct?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. I didn't, I didn't read that second sentence correctly. Never mind.
Thank you, sir.
So, one quick question. So, we say design seven months. Do we have any idea about how long construction is going to take?
12 months, yes.
Okay, so, for your information to the cemetery board, we're a good 19 months out, year and a half out?
Yeah. Yeah, I've already, yeah, more than a year and a half, yeah.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yeah, the, the funding for this, plus the 900K estimated for the construction in the future, where is that coming from? And is there like a borrow against general fund with payback as plots are sold, or how does that work?
Correct. This, this is actually funded by the cemetery fund. Before we go any further, the design, et cetera, council will then need to approve a loan to the cemetery fund with repayment terms over a period of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Hint, what you have in reserve? About?
Sorry, I moved to a brief.
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Meyer?
No discussion.
No further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you will read the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Item passes unanimously. We will now move on to item 10C. Consider action to approve the first reading resolution number R-2023-110 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a revolving loan fund program, expenditure of Bastrop Economic Development Corporation funds in amount of $30,000 for the program, repeating all resolutions in conflict, providing for an effective date, move to include on August 8th, 2023 consent agenda for second reading. Ms. Carrillo?
Mayor and council, this is a piggyback to the original Roscoe Bank program. As many of you recall, Roscoe Bank committed $100,000 over a period of five years to help small business retention and attraction through the BEDC. So, that amounted to $20,000 a year. In going through the EDC budget, the EDC board recommended an additional $30,000 a year, which would make the total available funds $50,000 per year. As you're all aware, EDC funds get approved at the board, but then get final approval at the council. And so, the board has approved a policy, we're here before you, to request the additional funding out of the board's budget.
Thank you, ma'am. Council, the city manager has laid out this item. Are there any questions for the city manager? Mayor Protim? Nope. Guess not. Then I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion. Second. I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. I'll remind you, the 10D has been moved to the executive session. Moving on to 10E, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-102 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving posting of a notice for public hearing to consider adoption of roadway impact fees, to be presented by our assistant city manager, Mr. Jobe. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is exactly like it says in the, in the heading there. Tonight, we're gonna, if we pass this resolution, we will establish a public hearing for September 12th. At that public hearing, we'll talk about the impact fees. Before that, we plan to workshop it with the P&amp;Z and back with city councils, where we'll bring up some policy implications. For example, what that might look like is currently the way the zoning is, is written, you can have two accessory dwelling units. Well, we don't think that you meant to put an impact fee on two accessory dwelling units. However, if you take your one-acre lot and you turn it into three lots, and now you're allowed nine dwelling units, is that an appropriate time to put in an impact fee? And that's the kind of subtle workshop before the public hearing on the 12th. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Jobe? Proof? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing no indication, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. 10F has been moved to executive session, will move to 10G. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-111 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a public improvement plan agreement with Colzing, I guess I pronounced that correctly, Enterprises LLC for the River Terrace subdivision, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a, a previous subdivision, you can look at your location map here, that's on the corner of Mesquite and Wilson. And what you have before you tonight is the public improvement plan agreement that establishes the fiscal requirements that need to be posted before the plat can be recorded. So, the plat that you see on the screen now, if this is approved tonight, will move forward to the P&amp;Z for Thursday night, if this is approved, and hopefully we'll finish the replat, we can start construction. And as you can see, this is the layout. So, what was there before was previously 37 lots. I think this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, about 62. So, it has an approved drainage plan, public improvement plan, all of the other stuff associated with it.
The blue on most of the left side looks like it could be water?
It, it's floodplain, yes.
Okay, so, there's properties in the floodplain?
So, what'll be required before they can, can actually build is, is the floodplain certificates and elevation certificates that are out of the floodplain. This is just noted on the plat.
Any other questions for Mr. Jobe? Are you through with your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Jobe?
The streets, are they completing Mesquite Street up to the top of the property?
They are not. There are some right-of-way issues with Mesquite Street there. I think it's unclear exactly who owns what. But what they will be subject to eventually, if you pass an impact fee, and you give it a timeframe, as a, they would be subject to paying an impact fee to help pay for the construction of Mesquite, their tiny proportional share, whatever that might be.
Okay, so, just to be sure, so that doesn't, approving this doesn't get them under the wire for anything like that?
It's my understanding that it does for a time period that's established. So, if you're approved in a certain time period, you get that three months or one year of relief, or whatever the timeframe that you establish. Three months by statute, I believe. Some people set it for up to a year.
Okay. And I'll move to a brief. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, but Councilmember Lee, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Motion passes unanimously. We will be moving into executive session. Items to be considered executive session are item 10D, consider action to approve resolution R-2023-108 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents related and to sale real property described as being 25.01 acre tract of land of Stephen F. Alston Survey Abstract Number 2, Bastrop County, Texas, and being all of a called 25-acre tract described to the city of Bastrop in volume 435, page 360 of the deed records of Bastrop County, Texas, said 25.01 acre tract being further described by meets and bounds as showed in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 10F, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-107 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving certain contracts with Capstick Development Group Limited, including a purchase and sell agreement, nondisclosure agreement, professional services agreement, all related to Pine Forest Unit 6 real estate project, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents. Item 11A, city council shall convene in a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551-071 and 551.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel related to the acquisition of real property interests and related matters for the Wayside wastewater collection system improvements and wastewater treatment plant number 3. Item 11B, city council shall convene in a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding economic development expenditures, incentives, sales taxes, certain real estate projects, and a possible hotel expansion. Item 11C, city council shall convene in to close executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.072, to seek the advice of legal counsel and discuss the potential real estate transaction relating to the Bastrop Fire Station. It is...
Mayor, if I may interrupt you, I want to add to the record that for items 10D and 10F, the justifications for going to executive session are Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney, and 551.072, real estate matters.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. It is 7:41, and we are in executive session.
We're gonna have a good motion. All of them are good motions. Don't look so sad, it's okay. At some point, I'm gonna have to have a more exciting life. Come on, that's not my sensor, is it? That's what my sensor sounds like, so. It's you, not me.
Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the role?
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
We'll move on to item 10F, that's already been laid out also, so I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, I'm gonna give that to Councilmember Lee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the role.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Council, we took into consideration three items, and are very additional items in the executive session. There's really no action required other than on item 11C, likely the city manager to continue negotiating with, with TSD 2 rolling to the Bastrop Fire Station. With that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. We adjourn.
Thank you.